Welcome to the Harpsell Select Board Meeting of Thursday, May 22, 2025. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda here? Chrissy, anything new?
No, I'm going to add one item under the Administrator's Report, and then we have one under Other Business having to do with waiving a disposal fee at the recycling center.
Yep.
Request for waiving.
Yep. All right. Public comment? Nope. Select Board Tenotments?
I got a couple. At 11:00 a.m. on Monday will be the Memorial Day Parade over at Harpsell Center, and the road will be closed from 10:45 to about noon there to allow the parade to happen. Secondly, after Memorial Day is when the commercial fishing industry really starts to ramp up. Guys are launching boats, setting traps, stuff like that. So just be mindful on the roads if you see a guy towing a big boat there. They're going slow, don't pass them. Be a little patient with them and stuff like that. It's a real safety concern. And don't pull in between the boat and the truck because that's the guy whose boat it is following it. He likes to keep a close eye on it. Thank you.
David?
Nope.
Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by saying that we, the interview team for the Communications Specialist and the Assessing Assistant, we're recommending Amelia Graham-Wazinski. We have been working to fill some vacancies here at the town office, and we are proposing Amelia because she has been the top candidate in both the communications area and the assessing area. So we're recommending that we meld those two positions and create a full-time position because of the skill sets of this person. And I think she's going to do a wonderful job for the town of Harpsell. Her prior work experience has been at the Harpsell Heritage Land Trust as a Director of Communications and Development, so she's got some great skills. She also has some ARC GIS skills that will be beneficial to the town. So we're recommending that you move forward with our request that you support this hire and that she would start at a rate of $24.50 per hour, and it would be effective Tuesday, May 27.
I second.
I second.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Thank you. Second item I wanted to make note of is the third national cell carrier is putting equipment on the Mitchellfield Tower. So T-Mobile is installing equipment. It's expected that it will be functional by late summer. So we know Verizon is now on there, and AT&amp;T has been on there from the beginning. But this will be the third carrier. And pursuant to the town's agreement with Blue Sky Towers, we receive $35,000 of revenue sharing whenever a new major carrier comes on. So that's good news to the town. We have not received that yet, but we will know when the system is functional because we will get that money at that time. And so I wanted to put that out there for people. Also want to give a brief update on LD 1864. It's a bill that the town of Harpsell introduced to the main legislature having to do with allowing commercial fishing infrastructure that was damaged during the January 2024 storms to be rebuilt and not have to meet Maine law when it comes to... There's a criteria for a variance that's called reasonable return. And in Maine, that has been... The courts have decided that that means if you can pitch a tent on your property, you have reasonable return. And under our floodplain management ordinance, you cannot replace something that was damaged by more than 50% on a dock or a wharf if it's larger than 200 square feet. So these fish houses in Harpsell or these commercial fishing operations that were damaged were generally larger than that, and they could not meet Maine law currently. So we submitted this very narrow bill to the legislature. Select Board Member Gilli went up recently, myself, and our town planner. We testified before the Joint Standing Committee on Housing and Economic Development. We got a really good reception at the public hearing, and we took note of some of the comments that were made at the public hearing. And the committee seemed to say, well, we'd like to expand this bill so that it can help other coastal communities. We then submitted an amendment to the committee prior to its work session, and the committee voted unanimously ought to pass on the revised bill, which just sweeps in more coastal communities. Again, it's very narrow because it's tailored only to structures that were damaged in the January 2024 storms. But I think it's legislation that we can build on going forward. And we have some particular people that really would like to move forward with projects, but they find that they're unable to do so. So we will continue reporting on this LD and are very hopeful that it's going to pass in this legislative session. I don't know if you'd like to add more to that?
No, I think you summed it up perfectly.
It should go to gavel.
Yeah, it gets to get voted on under the hammer there because it was unanimous. So they shouldn't even have a debate on it. It should pass pretty quick.
Yeah, we're learning some of the intricacies of Maine law, and it's gone to the reviser's office, I believe. So I don't know if it has to come back to the committee.
It will come back to the committee, and they'll vote to approve the new language review.
So anyway, I think things are moving forward in a positive way on that front. And then the last item I have under the Town Administrator's Report. We have been taking our time trying to find the right person for code enforcement. And because of that, we still have a vacancy in that office for our second code enforcement officer position. A lot of the workload has fallen on the assistant in that office. So I do want to recommend to the board that you consider a salary adjustment or wage adjustment for Denise Perry as assessing... Or as a code enforcement assistant. $2 an hour extra back to January 1 because we have been without a second code officer since that time. We're still interviewing. We're still looking for the right candidate. And I think that this individual deserves that extra compensation for taking on so many additional responsibilities.
Well, let's be until we hire a new codes officer or what you thought?
I would say that's very likely, but I don't have a specific date for you at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, she's absolutely worth it. I mean, she's been working hard, and I would... I move that we do that.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. Consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll move that old consent agenda for it's the approval of the minutes, election worker appointments, accept a safety grant award, which I haven't seen yet, but you know, I understand that we've got it. The ratio, 2025 ratio declaration form, and steward appointment for town lands and the authorization of the warrants.
I second everything David just said.
Do you know, discussion? All in favor? Pots Point Wharf. Final insurance settlement and bid package.
So I really do want to recognize our harbor master, Paul Plummer. He's here tonight. Again, we're going back to the January 2024 storms. When the town lost its dock at Pots Point, we've been in discussions with the insurance company since that occurred. We have received two payments to date from the insurance company. One was just under $27,000. Another was close to $69,000. We had not yet settled the claim. We were still waiting for a dock building company to provide an updated replacement cost value to the insurance company. That's now been provided, and they are offering us essentially the final settlement here tonight in front of you. And we, the staff, would like to, you know, suggest that the board, you know, assuming you're in agreement with us, that you would accept this final figure of $14,716.14. We did have a $15,000 deductible. We're still in discussions with FEMA about whether or not we will see that deductible covered by FEMA. And in addition to these insurance payments, we are working with FEMA on what we're calling mitigation items, and we can talk about that when we get to the bid. But FEMA has indicated that it would consider paying for these additional items that would make the structure more secure and resilient in the future. But this number right here would be settling our claim with the insurance company if you want to vote to accept that.
I move that we accept the claim.
Second.
All in favor? Good work, Paul.
Thank you.
New Fisheries Committee and draft.
Well, wait, we still have to do the bid package.
We got to do the RFP.
Pots Point.
Sorry about that.
So we know we have a lot of interested folks wondering what our timetable is for replacing the Pots Point town dock. We are getting our permits right now. We don't have all our permits in place, but we've hired Tim Forrester, the Select Board hired Tim Forrester's company, to put together our permit requests, both to the state DEP and to the Army Corps. And he's also working on the town's permits as well. The design that you have in front of you is for option two, and that would be to make this dock six feet wide. We'd go from four feet to six feet. It would be up to four feet higher than the previous dock. It would potentially include an additional float, an eight-by-24-foot float, a couple of mooring blocks to secure that extra float, and an aluminum ramp that would be four feet by 50 feet. When you look at the request for proposal that we put together, there's a scope of work, and one through five is basically getting the dock rebuilt. The add-ons are items six, seven, and eight, being the additional flow, mooring blocks, and the aluminum ramp. Those are the items that FEMA has suggested it's open to reimbursing the town for. So the voters at our annual town meeting did approve up to $200,000 from our fund balance to use for this project and also approved any additional insurance money we might receive and FEMA proceeds. So we believe that, you know, it's time to put the project out to bid. We're hopeful that we get some responses by July 7. And once we have permits in hand, we would ask the board to move forward with signing a contract, and hopefully, construction could start probably in the fall. It would depend on, you know, companies and their... The docks they already have on their schedule. But, you know, we've heard from some that they would make an effort to try to move the town's project up if they could.
If not, we'll sic all the neighbors down there on them.
But, you know, it's not going to be ready for this season, essentially.
Yeah, no.
People have to understand that.
The sooner we get it done, the better, though.
I move we go up for the RFP.
I second it. Any discussion? Haven't seen any. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, now we go. New Fisheries Committee.
I created a mission statement, or I should give credit where credit is due. I put some words down, and Paul formulated it into a mission statement for me. So thank you, Paul.
Didn't use AI?
No, no, not for this one.
Sort of.
Yeah. This is artificial intelligence. And I'm open to any suggestions the board may have for it, and I'm open to names for the committee, too, if there is...
Are you keeping the ones that I put on initially, or?
We spoke at our last aquaculture meeting, and everybody was encouraged to apply that was on that group. There was a couple of people that said they didn't have interest in continuing, and I doubt they would apply. But the majority of the group did seem like they wanted to apply.
It was a good group.
Yeah, it was. And I think the only other thing I would add is if we accept the mission statement just with the way timing and the vote and everything goes, I think we could potentially start accepting applications, couldn't we, once we approve the mission statement? And then that way, we have applications on file. Or after the June 10 vote, we can just implement the committee and assign all the members at that point because we'd have their applications on hand.
Yep.
Well, I've read it three, four times. I like it, you know.
And the only other thing I guess I might add is if you guys are okay with it, I'd like to be the liaison. I mean, I'd lose aquaculture.
What's that?
I'd lose aquaculture because that committee would end or that work group would end, so this would take its place.
Makes total sense, total sense.
You can have it.
You don't want to duel for it or anything?
No, I guess not. Do we need a motion to...
Yeah.
Yeah? Well, I move that we accept this as the mission statement.
Do I second it? I second it?
Yep. All in favor? Excellent. All right. Request to refund mooring fee.
Speaking of the town dock.
Speaking of the town dock. Actually, you nip this one the bud pretty quick.
Good evening, Paul Plummer of the town's harbor master. So there was a request from an individual who did not... They did not want to pay the fee at all, considering there was no access point.
Is that mic on?
It's on, yes. Just not talking into it. And they were already late in their payment. They paid after the May 1 deadline, so they are... They did submit their two $50 payments, but they are refusing to pay the late fee because they said there's no access point for them to even get to their moorings.
We still have a boat launch there, correct?
We do.
Thank you.
And floats have been installed this week with a haul-off system that will be installed by the weekend.
And we provide a dinghy on that haul-off?
The group... The dinghy users down there provide a communal dinghy to use on the haul-off, yeah.
Let me make it simple. My motion is no, pay your late fees, and if he doesn't, Paul, you summons him.
Well, and as I've... You discussed with me that there's a waiting list of people. And if they don't keep up with their mooring, they're liable to lose it, and somebody else will jump in.
Moorings are a privilege, not a right. That's something that should be remembered. And there's another thing that should be pointed out in the letter. Moring registrations go out at the same time as boat registrations. January 1, you can register your mooring. January 1, you can register your boat, so.
You have five months.
Yeah, Peter mentions that in here.
Right. And they are the same time. You can do them at the same time, just like he wants to. So I don't see any reason... I'll second Kevin's motion. Basically, is where I'm going with it.
All right.
Any discussion?
Peter's a friend of mine. I mean, but when you're right, you're right, and when you're wrong, you're wrong. So, you know, whatever.
You gonna spit it out?
No, I mean, you know, whatever.
All right, I'll second it.
Oh, I thought you motioned it, and I second it.
I made the motion.
My wife's already looking at me.
All right, all in favor? There we go. There you go, do it. All right, deed of gift.
Mr. Chairman, I want to introduce Dennis Wilkins. He's a painter who lives on Bailey Island, and he has a... A painting that he would like you to consider accepting as a gift.
Yeah. A glass broke. I'll have to replace it.
Do we get a drum roll? I'm not very good at the drums. Let me do it.
Okay. Well, I have... I wanted to give a gift to the town, and I hope I have one minute to read the story. "Last year, I painted an individual portrait of each of six lobstermen. It was my way to honor them and to show respect for what they contribute to the Maine we all love. That project generated much satisfaction and good community feelings, and I began to wonder if a further step might be taken. Inspiration came when I looked at Rembrandt's painting called The Syndax of the Drapers Guild, and I have a picture of it here. It's a group portrait of six businessmen during the Dutch Golden Age of economic and cultural dominance, and it's painted in a large format, six by nine feet, and it's next to a sample of their trade, a drape draped over a table. They were men of their time and place whose portrait was publicly displayed in the guild hall. So the challenge I set for myself was to echo this work of Rembrandt's, to paint a group portrait of our own six tradesmen in a large format, four by six feet, positioned just like the drapers alongside a symbol of their profession. My hope is to have this work on public display, namely, town hall, as a way to further honor and remember these men, their profession, this time, this place, this Maine." So... Left to right, it's George Coffin, Courtney Johnson, Frank Rogers, Brandon Lyman, Kevin Lee, taking the guild. Six lobstermen who lived close to me. I wanted to walk down the line. Just asked the first people I came upon if I could take their picture and paint them, and six out of the seven people I approached said yes. And so that's why it's these particular six. Just luck of the draw, luck of location.
Did you get all six of them to sit there that whole time? Did you get all six of them to sit there while you painted it the whole time?
Last year...
That's an impressive feat in its own.
Well, I had a trick. Last year with the six individual portraits, we had a show at the Oars Island Schoolhouse, and if they didn't show up, they didn't get their portrait. That's the story. So I hope the town accepts it. And this is a little plaque that names the men, and it gives the story that I just read. And as I just dropped it, I broke the glass, and I'll have to replace it. But this would go with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right next. So that's what I hope to accomplish.
Oh, thank you.
So just a little bit of information about the process. The town has adopted a gift ordinance. It allows the Select Board to accept a gift of $3,000 of value or less. And it also allows you to take public comment before you make a decision. So I don't know if you are interested in, you know, maybe putting this on in two weeks since it was unveiled tonight or if you are prepared to move forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that gives the chance of public... I mean, this is the first time the public's seen it.
Right, right. Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
No, I think as long as that's the process you want to follow. So we'll put it on the agenda in two weeks. We will post this with the agenda. I mean, it will be here if people want to stop by and see it.
Can we post a picture of it so people can view it on the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll put it in the... There's a wall back there, break it up.
Okay.
We can maybe let people know that they can come in and view it in person if they want them to.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Wonderful job. That's pretty... That's impressive.
You are talented, I have to say.
All right. Letter of support for net energy billing to state legislatures.
So I believe we have the Chair of the Energy and Technology Committee, Howard Marshall, here tonight. Looking to the board to see if you want to support endorsing an LD that's being discussed with the legislature.
Yeah, straighten me out. I've been diving on this for the last two days trying to...
So I'm not here representing the committee so much because this happened after our last meeting, so I haven't had a chance to have a meeting with the committee about it. But it was brought to my attention, and both the town has a solar subscription for the electricity, and a lot of people in town have solar panels. And the justification for going ahead with these things is based on the, you know, the original implementation of the net energy billing. There are problems with it, but it's being used right now as a justification for, if not repealing it, sabotaging it to the point where it's really not usable. And it's possible that that could affect the people who already have solar panels and the town with its contract with the solar farm. So what I'm asking is not so much as to, you know, dive into the details, but to simply... I already sent this letter as, you know, as an individual constituent to Senator Daughtry and Representative Golick. And I just wanted to see if the town would endorse the same sort of, please be cautious in this. I mean, that's mostly what I'm saying, is it needs attention, but it's one of these things where you say, well, this isn't working the way we wanted it to. I don't want them to say, so let's get rid of it. I want them to say, so let's review what it's done and see what we can adjust on it.
There's too much sledgehammering happening these days. And so, you know, I...
If I can say one more thing, Dave. I mean, I would take this to the Energy Committee and say, let's, you know, talk about it and write something similar from the view of the town. But it's going to the floor of the House or the floor of the legislature really soon. It's been through the committee, and now, you know, I don't think there's time to do that. And I, you know, if you agree with this and want to, you know, send something, you know, maybe the first three quarters of this without the little piece at the end saying, I'd love to talk to you more. I'm just bringing it to your attention as something you might want to just send to the state rep and Senator, saying, please, you know, try not to... Try to prevent this from being sledgehammered.
Oh, yeah. I don't understand what brought the change about, anyway. I was trying to...
Okay. So as I understand it, the net energy billing was implemented in, I think, 2019.
Yes.
And it gives... It gives an outsized advantage to people putting up solar. And the purpose is to prime the pump so that, you know, there would... It was scheduled that the credits would decrease in value gradually, and that was reversed. And as far as I know, it's still the original implementation. The complaint is that as more and more of this electricity goes into the grid, the people who are using solar are not bearing some of the costs that everybody else is. And so, I mean, that could be adjusted. There's a number of ways that they could do that. And it's still the case that it would be, you know, to the advantage of people who are using solar. But, you know, some of the proposals, like I said, you know, instead of repealing it, one of the proposals is to slash the value of the credits to the point where the town would probably end up paying a little bit more because our credits wouldn't be worth as much, but we wouldn't be paying as much for the credits. So it would cost the town probably somewhat more. But the other thing is that what that would do is likely bankrupt the solar farms, which might even mean that the town is now sitting there with these credits and a contract and nobody on the other end of it. And so that's why, you know, it would be good to make sure that it's done cautiously and gradually rather than, oh, it didn't work, let's just, you know, smash it.
Is this CMP trying to recover some of the transmission costs?
No, this is solar companies trying to fund their projects.
No.
Well, it's the initial...
Yeah.
Well, so what's happening is it was overbuilt. So it worked too well, I guess.
What's happened is it was instituted in 2019, and since 2019, Maine has seen the largest increase in electricity rates in the nation in that time. My electrical bill alone has tripled in that time, and I think everybody else has as well in town. I personally am not a fan of net energy billing. I would like to see it go away, and I would not support this letter. I... The fact that solar farms don't even have to test for PFAs when they're installing them, and that bill was quashed at the state level this session where they were supposed to test for PFAs upon installation and create a baseline study and then go back and check. And they didn't want to look for chemicals. So we know those chemicals are in these panels. If they don't want to do the due diligence, but they want to get the money, I don't agree with that. Like, what harm is being done to the environment? And the harm is certainly being done to the ratepayers because they're the ones footing the bill. Forty percent of coastal communities, including Harpsell, live on a fixed income, and they cannot afford these electricity bills to continue at the rate they've been at. I do not support net energy billing. I do not support net energy billing the way it is.
So if I may, first of all, most of the price increases have been from the cost of fuel.
That's false. Based on information from the state of Maine, 67% of our energy now comes from renewable sources.
I don't believe that.
That's from the state of Maine's energy office.
I can't believe we're anywhere near that, but the the CMP rates have not been raised because of solar electricity. The rate increases that I saw, the 80% rate increase, was based on the price of natural gas. So it's, you know, it's a complicated issue.
But you can't get rid of natural gas and rely on solely renewables either, because there, you don't, we don't have the storage for renewables. So you have to have a backup, and that is fossil fuels. And to completely cut out fossil fuels, we're setting ourselves up for major brownout and blackouts. I've spent significant time on this subject because of offshore wind and all that stuff. I know far too much, or I know far more than I want to know about power generation. And net energy billing has not panned out for the individual in the state of Maine. It's panned out for solar companies, and it's panned out for the people that are wealthier and can afford to put them on their houses and stuff like that, but for the general person on fixed income, they can't afford more rate increases. We have the third most expensive power in the nation now.
I know that, and I bought into a solar field a couple of years ago, and it has reduced my power bill. So, you know, this isn't simply about solar panels on your roof.
No, it's community solar farms as well. It's anything under 5 megawatts.
Yep.
How is ours working out?
Well, we have talked about bringing on a solar consultant to really dig into our situation and see if we're getting the kind of deal that we thought we would get. It's gotten rather complicated, the credit situation.
Yes, it's true. I mean, that's one of the reasons we wanted a consultant to the committee, was to see if we could build our own solar field instead of subscribing to the solar farm, because it's gotten complicated, and it's not, you know, it's not been as flexible as was indicated when we signed up for it.
So this letter is simply asking that, this isn't a knee-jerk reaction, that this is done, it isn't a hatchet job, it's just done a little more slowly. It's not saying, don't get rid of any B, it's just saying.
I'd like to see it gone, personally, or I'd like to see them do more due diligence, you know, and do more environmental impacts. I mean, we're watching, I mean, we've all seen it. If you drive up the road, how many fields have been filled? How many trees have been cut for these solar panels, and what? I mean, I think there's a correct way to do it. Like, I have no issue. We want to line the tops of parking lots with solar panels, line the median of the highway, you know, but let's make sure it's not going to come at the cost of ratepayers and the cost of the environment. And if you're not willing to test for PFAs, when you know your products have PFAs, what are you trying to hide?
So I think what we're, I think what this letter asks for is to look into some of that, rather than just cut it, rather than just stop it, to do some of the due diligence, and maybe come out of the other end with a better product. Maybe it's getting rid of it altogether, but do it slowly, and not just cut it off.
Yeah. It's kind of where I'm at, too.
Well, I'd be, you know, since Matt doesn't want to put his
I will put my name on it. The fishing community wouldn't hold me in high regard.
I'm willing to make it from the Energy and Technology Committee.
Okay.
Well, they haven't met yet.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, like I say, this was brought to my attention last week, after, as it happens, right after the last Energy and Technology.
Who was it brought to your attention, just out of curiosity?
The, one of the possible consultants that we interviewed for the Energy Committee to guide us in renewable energy development.
Were they in the solar, were they in the solar industry?
Yes, very much so, yeah.
So they have a conflict of interest, didn't even, I mean, that's their pocketbook that they're trying to protect.
Well, I mean, he's not a solar farm owner. He's not an investor in them. That's, those are the people who are most likely to get hurt directly. The issue is, what do you do when the solar farms go bankrupt, and you have all these people that have contracts with them? But, you know, he told me that he's seriously thinking of leaving Maine, because the volatility and the rules is making it impossible to make any plans. Like I say, I'm just saying that I want to see them do this cautiously. Do it, make changes gradually, look at it, and, you know, see where the, you know, where there's a square peg and a round hole, and make it round.
I wish they, when they implemented it, they had used that same caution, and we wouldn't be in the predicament we're in now.
Well, you know, so they implemented something, and now it's time to review it and revise it, and not just repeal it and say, well, we don't like it, so let's get rid of it. Anyway.
Well, how do we make it official? We can't come up with a Board of Selectmen, because we have one who doesn't want to sign it.
Who can sign it.
Who can sign it, yeah. Okay, I move that we
Can we just agree on what you would sign?
Yeah, yeah, everything but the bottom word says, I would be happy to discuss this with you further.
Okay, for the whole?
Except that where it says "I" would say "we". I move that we send this to Board of Selectmen as modified, to make it more appropriate.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed?
I'm happily opposed, yep.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. All right, results of septic system replacement project bids and a contractor recommendation.
So you were provided. Is this working? Please just say that we received six bids. The septic system is being replaced with a state of Maine grant. Six bids were received, and the lowest bid is $15,730 from R.A. Weber and Sons. And I did receive approval from the state of Maine today to accept that bid and contract with R.A. Weber and Sons.
Yep.
I move that we go with R.A. Weber and Sons.
I second it. I'm happy to see it's the local company, too.
Well, I think a big thank you goes out to R.A. Weber. They're doing a town a favor.
Oh, big time. You can tell, just by the bids.
Oh, yeah. I know what a new septic costs right now.
Yeah, I just bought one two years ago.
All right, all in favor? Good.
So it is posted online, but I'm happy to go down through that. R.A. Weber, the lowest bid was $15,730. The next was CCC Construction for $22,975. Ford Enterprise, $38,400. Weber Enterprise, $38,467. Harris Kubricki, $40,000. Ray Labby and Sons, $45,300.
Ray Labby, it was wild, three times.
All right. Town signed MSC 75 district budget referendum warrant.
So this is essentially pro forma. The town select board has asked to countersign the warrant and notice of election, which will be on June 10th, for voters to consider passing the school budget.
We have to make a motion?
Yeah, I think it would be good if you moved to
I move that we sign it.
Yep.
I'll second.
I went to the committee vote the other night. It was quite exciting.
Oh, you went to the budget meeting, huh?
Only took an hour. All in favor?
Great, thank you.
All right. Personal property revaluation contract.
So I think you may recall that the town signed a revaluation agreement with Vision, a company out of Massachusetts, but in that contract, they said that they would not perform business personal property review. So we sought some alternatives, and we received a proposal from KRT Appraisal. This is a company that the town has used annually to kind of look at assessing matters and advise the town on an annual basis of what our sales have been doing, where we may need to make adjustments. So they're quite familiar with the town's assessing practices, and they are proposing that for $24,000, they will review all of the business personal property accounts. And this is information that will be used for the 2026 tax commitment. It will not be used for 2025.
So you're recommending that we sole source with these?
Yeah, we did receive a second proposal, and it was well above this one. So there aren't that many companies doing this type of work necessarily, and we would recommend that you accept this contract, and we had a second one.
We've worked with them before, too, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
And we've had good luck.
On a annual basis, yes.
I move that we go with KRT.
I second it.
Yep. All in favor?
Great, thank you.
Accept donations. All yours, David.
Okay. So I move that we accept donations from Ken Simmons for $250 for the heating project. Anonymous is $50 for Family Swim. Wayne and Nancy Hirsch for the bandstand, $200. Harold Weeks III, $250 for the bandstand, a total donations of $750.
I second it.
All in favor? Excellent. Public comment? No? Other business?
So we had a request from Community Television for the town to waive disposal fees of the old bottle shed that was at the entrance to the recycling center.
This is paperwork, basically. But, yeah, and I will recuse from.
I'll make motion that we waive the fees.
Oh, yeah, I'll second it. It's sad to see it go, but I don't think we should charge them to see it go.
No, I think David is tired of doing, he's tired of doing bottles.
I can't say I blame him. That place
And you can imagine, it was
Do you have, just out of, this is just my own personal curiosity. Do you have any idea, like, how much money you guys generated over the years from the bottles?
I don't know about over the years, but in our best year, it was $14,000.
That's wild.
Yeah.
Multiply that by five cents, you know, and figure out how many bottles that is. It's scary how many you handle.
Times, yeah. I handled a lot of bottles.
Did I second?
If David was getting, yeah, you did.
It was the second.
Okay.
If David was getting paid, it would have been
I'd have kept on doing it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
All right.
And I recuse.
Okay, thank you. And I did ask the manager what he thought the cost might be, and he said $100, $150. So I don't think it's a huge sum in the scheme of things.
If there's nothing else?
No.
Yep, my turn.